Okay, call the order regular meeting of Bloomfield's School Board of Education. Michelle, can you please take attendance?
Um, yes. All board members are present with the exception of Jennifer Matlow.
Thank you. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure of allegiance, student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at that. That's nice. Attendance, right?
Right.
Attendance, Jennifer's out.
Can't figure out which board business items.
Why don't you move that ahead?
They're trying to get to forensics.
Okay, we can do that real quick. We can do it after that, I assume. Actually, first order business is to, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to move board business A. And 9A and B to June 23, 2022. The state of Michigan hasn't released their budget yet, and the number of board members are still kind of working through the budget numbers. Howard, if you'd like to have discussion, or is there a second on that motion?
Second the motion, now discussion.
I'm not sure if it's A and B, to be honest. I'm just taking a look at it.
Just to understand, John, so you want to move A, you know, 9A and 9B, and table those until a future, one of the future meetings? Do you want to keep 7A, the public hearing, do you want to keep that on the agenda too? Or move that?
Well, maybe that's the one I'm, I think we should move that as well.
Has it been ever? Were you thinking June 23rd?
Yes, June 23rd. Is that our regular scheduled meeting, I believe?
So, can we close discussion and adjust the amendment?
So, the amendment, so the motion is what now, sir?
Motion to move Agenda Item 7A, 9A, and 9B to June 23, 2022. At our regular scheduled meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those.
Nay.
Let me just ask, before we, Mr. Superintendent, is that going to be a concern for you guys in terms of making the July 1 deadline?
We'll have to do what it takes to make the deadline.
Okay. Because there is, with, with the public hearing, there is some newspaper advertisements and things like that, as long as you can make it, make it work.
We'll have to do what it takes to make the deadline.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we'll move on to, to A and B, Special Recognition Board Intern and Student Advisory, oh, final report, 2A.
So, good evening. We are really excited for our final student intern and advisory council update for the year. And we're going to start by doing, doing an overview and update on all of the various different senates at the middle schools. So, the BHMS student senate, we had the final meetings for the 8th grade and the 7th grade just last week. And it's been really great to see how they've been able to progress. The 8th grade student senate is essentially autonomous in its own way. They've been having their own little meetings and working on creating SEL plans. And their deadline for finishing those SEL lessons is next week. And we hope that in mid-June, before the end of the school year, they'll be able to work with their teachers and hold these educational presentations for all of the 8th graders at the middle school. And for the 7th grade, they've been creating some presentations and creating a proposal as well for their two different projects. The 6th grade is meeting tomorrow, and that will be their final meeting.
Hi, thank you all so much. So, for the final report, I just want to say, myself and Kennedy went to West Hills yesterday, actually, to do our final meeting with, and so, the West Hills meets with 6th, 7th, and 8th combined. And we got a lot of really incredible feedback from the students, specifically relating to how counseling works at the middle school, which is feedback that we were able to bring to Mrs. Paul Mary. And we're working with her to improve, improve that for them next year. And I'd be happy to talk with any of you about this afterwards, if, if you'd like. So, yeah, we've had just a really incredible time working with these students. They're doing a really amazing job at improving their school. And I'm hopeful that next year, the student senate will be able to take some of this progress that we've already made and bring it forward with their own mini-projects, which is something that I know the East Hills student senate has actually been working on. And with that, I want to pass it over to the East Hills people. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you. I've had the pleasure of meeting with the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade student senates at East Hills. Our last meetings took place early this month, and I believe I'm supposed to meet with them in the last week of their school year, around June 13 sometime, just to do some final goodbyes, because they were fantastic students. And so far, we've set in place multiple small projects for each grade to work on, well, it's really one project for grade. So, the 6th grade student senate expressed that they would like to spend more time with their peers outside of the classroom. And knowing that we can't really make changes to the curriculum to add any field trips so late in the year, they decided that they wanted to create a PowerPoint which advocated for more use of the outdoor spaces in East Hills to have their classes in, so that they can enjoy each other and the weather for the end of the year. And that is in progress. They're supposed to be sending me the PowerPoint very soon. The 7th grade student senate has opted to create a Google form to garner interest in 7th graders to become mentors to incoming 3rd graders. And they are hoping to pair up the students who replies to the form with 3rd grade families at the upcoming Ice Cream Social, which I believe is on June 3. So, that's really fun. They're getting their own leadership roles there, which is exciting. The 8th grade student senate expressed that students are experiencing some forms of bullying and judgment within their classrooms. And upon hearing this, I talked about, or talked with them about the hate incident form that's created for the board. But they expressed that they wanted something that was more localized, so they're also creating a form where only the student senate will view incidents of hate and bullying, so that they can go directly to their teachers and solve the problem internally. So, that is the recap of the projects that the students have been working on. I'm really proud of these students. They've been amazing and trying to help their community, and very committed in coming to these meetings and sacrificing their time throughout school. So, I'm very proud to have been working with them. Thank you.
And then, just to end the report for tonight, we just have a year in review. So, obviously, the board intern program is three years in the making, and this being the third year, we all believe that it is this year that the program has truly come to life. Between the networks that we've established, the interviews we attended, and now our student senate program, we are so excited with how far we have come. And we want to thank all of you guys for the support, and all the administrators for helping us bring this program to life. And then, as for our student senates, we look forward to not only continuing them in future years, but helping them grow and develop. So, we do plan to train our future board interns and advisory council members, so that they can carry on the student senate program next year and in years to come. Thank you. That's all we have for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much. I think, speak for everyone. Pat?
Just kind of piggybacking off President Van Gemmer. It's been an honest pleasure to get to know each and every one of you. There's so many different things going on in the world that give me pause and concern. Knowing that the future is going to be led by people like you gives me a lot of comfort. And it makes me feel that things are going to be okay, and that things are actually going to be better. And I've been trying to reflect on that the past six months, knowing that when I'm gone and as I grow older, that you're going to make this world a better place. And the character and integrity and compassion and strength that all of you have shown during so many difficult times is just been amazing. Each one of you has faced challenges, not just during COVID, but before. And I know I've talked to a lot of you about those challenges and your dreams and your careers. And while your path may have changed from what you thought it was going to be a year ago or two years ago, know you're still on the right path and know that you're going to be successful. And we're all here and looking forward to hearing back from you and how your experience is and what you're doing and how you're making the world a better place for all of us and for all the children that aren't born yet to come into. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognition, right? Board, Board Intern and Student Advisory Council recognition. Michelle?
So, I just want to say that it was definitely a pleasure, almost a year ago, to sit in a virtual space to interview such a dynamic group of high school students that have far exceeded any of our original expectations of this particular initiative. And so, I just want to say, Howard, John, Pat, and Rebecca and I worked with you all this year, and we know that you have extreme promise for the future. And we know you're never going to, you know, forget about Bloomfield Schools, right? You're going to be proud alum and come back and one day give back to our students, because that's the spirit that you all embody and carry throughout your time here. So, thank you again for your, your time with us. And we do have some short recognitions for you, but I do want to make sure that my other colleagues, if there are other things that you want to say before we do the formal certificate passing out. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Yeah, I can make a comment. So, as me, Sivir, and Lisa realized, I forget what it was, last Sunday, two Sundays ago, you know, we interviewed 28 new, you know, candidates, potentially, you know, for the board intern. And questions came up from the candidates about, well, what will we be doing, you know, give us a little bit. And I think, to your credit, you know, we kept a good portion, they had limited time, a good portion was accolades of what you've done this year. You didn't really take direction from us. You kind of did, student senate wasn't anything we came up with. A lot of things that you did was nothing we came up with. So, you know, we challenged the new people, you know, you're going to have to be innovative. You're going to have to, you know, look to what the needs are out there. And I just give you a lot of credit in terms of what you've done. I mean, and going back to what one of you commented, you know, this program's three years old, and the vision was to get voice throughout the district. And one of the hardest things was outside of the high school students, how would we get voice? And I think you found an innovative way to get voice, and I give you a lot of credit for that.
All right.
I just also want to echo everyone's gratitude for serving the community and the student body so well. I hope for all of us and our country that this is just the beginning of your public service, because like Superintendent Watson said, the world needs you. Thank you very much.
I guess they don't want me to talk. Okay, so, we do have a plaque for each of you. So, our president will, will call your names, and do we want to, like, shake their hands and make it, like, really all official? Or do you want to just hand them to you?
I'm just pulling out.
All right, we want to make sure we're doing what's comfortable. All right, so, our first, we wanted to recognize our board interns. And our two board interns are leaders of the group. We appreciate your dedication and all that you've done this year. And our board interns are Heather and, we're going to go with Heather first. And Lena. So, thank you, both of you, for your leadership. I'll read them according to how they have them. So, and then, our student advisory board, our dedicated, and I want to, before we, I know you all have to be somewhere, but I want to say that you all don't know that we originally only had seven seats. And we're so happy that you made it so difficult for us that we had to extend it to eight. And so, I think that says a lot about our decision, and we really appreciate all the service that you all have done for the district in elevating this particular initiative. So, Johniki. Although Ali is not here, we want to recognize Ali. And Kennedy is also not here. We'd like to also recognize Kennedy. Natalie. And Aaron. And then, Andrew is also not here this evening, but we also want to recognize Aaron, I mean, Andrew. Aaron was in front of me, so of course I wanted to say Aaron. So, and we had a great representation, and we do hope that in the future, we also have a good student representation. So, thank you all. Does anyone else want to say anything? So, next, we're going to pause for a quick five-minute break, and then we're going to take, yes. So, we're going to take a five-minute break for photos and then cake.
We'll get started again. Is there any public comment? We'll move on to, for the president's, Board President's report. In lieu of a report today, I'd like to take a moment to silence for Rab Elementary in Texas, so if everyone could bother heads for one minute. Just want to say, it's really disappointing that this keeps happening. I don't really have anything else to say about it today. And sorry, Superintendent Watson, I'll pass it over to you for your report as number five on the agenda.
Thank you, President Van Gemmer. So, kind of thinking about what I wanted to update everyone about today, because there's, there's always so many things and where to start. And so, I guess I'm going to start in 1973. In 1973, I had the opportunity to get ready for my first day of school as a young person that was going to start an Head Start program, and very excited about that. And I remember setting out my clothes the night before and just that excitement. And so much of what our students experience is about moments and memories that they'll take with them a lifetime. And one of those moments that I've been so fortunate to be a part of since 1973 is that first day of school. And the excitement that it builds, and hopefully, even as board members who get excited know it's going to be the first day of school. Another part of those moments and memories are all the end-of-the-year activities that take place, and just how special they are for all the students. And we're very fortunate, we get to partake in, if not all, the majority of them. So, on that note, Wing Lake had their prom last week, and they were dressed in their best, and they had, out there dancing with their peers, and it was just a great celebration. And, you know, the whole idea that the cafeteria is a Disney theme and decorated with the students' favorite characters was great. Also looking forward to seeing our students Thursday graduate from IA. It's, it's also the same night as BHHS prom. So, I know for a lot of us, we'll be attending the IA graduation and then driving 1.1 miles down the road to get to prom. If you know of any secret parking spots before or on the way there, let me know. If you need a secret spot to park for graduation, there is a lot right by the Dequinder Cut, which is usually available to park, and then it's a short walk to the IA graduation, but not to prom. Also, a couple other things. We've had 55 students that have been placed in medical internships throughout two years in the biomedical pathway at Bloomfield Hills High School. Beyond excited about that, you know, as we move to more experiential learning, knowing that our students are getting these hands-on learning opportunities, it's not just that part. It allows them to see if that's really a career they want. It's one thing to read about it, it's another thing to hear about it, it's another thing to watch a video about it, but when you actually physically do it, it really gives you that real feel and that understanding. So, beyond excited about that. Our prep students participated in residency with world-famous Detroit artist Hubert Massey and renowned photographer S.K. Young, collaborating on a mosaic mural and preparing photography and other art for an exhibit that was available at The Hawk last week. Again, providing real, authentic, hands-on, experiential learning for our students. As I mentioned many times before, that's the direction we're moving in, pre-K through 26. We know, we just celebrated our student interns that are kind of on their way to a forensics, forensics meet or forensic event. So, just to update everyone, we actually have forensics teams in all three of our middle schools and at Bloomfield Hills High School. All three middle schools have students placed in their categories, and the high school forensics team finished second overall in the state. So, we have a great and exciting program with forensics. As a district, we also came together for the multicultural night and the Bloomfield Youth Assistance Awards over the past couple weeks. Again, more opportunities for, you know, building those, those moments and their memories for our students, and just celebrating all their accomplishments and then bringing our community together. Also, as we come to the end of the year, this will be the first time that I've been superintendent of the school district, Nakonwood, where we've had a full year of in-person learning. So, I really want to thank all of our staff that has bent over backwards to make sure that happened without disruption, from, from our buildings being open to being able to provide transportation and not having to cut a route. It's been day-to-day on many of those situations, and just very, very, I feel very fortunate that we were able to make sure it worked and we were able to do it. And looking forward to what next year might bring. You know, there's always that closure of the school year, and then the excitement starts to build over the summer for when next year will end. And if you talk to students, like, yeah, can't wait for the summer, it's great. By the time you get to mid-August, for a lot of our students, they're ready to be back. And I can foresee things that are just going to be truly amazing next year, as we bring our students back to whatever the, whatever the new normal's going to be. And we also know that, you know, every student also brings into the building a struggle we don't know about. And as we work to continue to identify what those are, to make sure we're doing what we can for each individual student to best move them and their learning forward, is something I'm looking forward to doing as well. I think that's all I have. President Van Gemmer.
Thanks, Pat. Move to six, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to read it? I can read it if no one volunteers.
I can help you.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. So, the consent agenda, I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda. B, request to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 28, 2022. C, request to approve the minutes from the study session of May 12, 2022. D, request to approve dispersment report by Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented. E, request to approve monthly financial reports. Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. F, request to approve EviroClean contract extension. Jacob McDermick, Director of Physical Plant Services. I move the Board of Education approve the two-year custodial service contract extension with EviroClean to provide custodial services for the 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 physical years, totaling not to exceed $2,335,180 and $2,464,228 respectively, and authorizing the superintendent to finalize the terms of the extension. G, request to approve HR actions. Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented.
All those in favor? All right. Moving on to eight, general discussion. A, Special Education Equity Update and Wing Lake Developmental Center MACIP update. With Jen Perone, Margaret Schultz, Rebecca Anders, and Trevor Harker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't want to touch anything. No worries. She just told me where we have it. There you go, and then you can just arrow. Okay, perfect, thank you. So, good evening. We're here for our annual update around special education. Oops. Oh, boy. We need napkins.
In case you needed a pause in your presentation.
We appreciate the effort. Do we know it?
Speaking of custodial contracts.
Thanks for getting that cleaned up so quickly.
Never had such good target.
All right. So, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jennifer Perone, the Director of Special Education. And then, with me, Margaret Schultz, Director of Equity. Rebecca Anders, Supervisor for Wing Lake. Trevor should be walking through the door at any moment, so we'll introduce him when he comes in. And then, we also have two speech therapists who are going to be presenting with us tonight as well. Amy Goldman and Mallory Frank will be joining the presentation as well. So, we'll start by just giving you an update on the level system and where we are with the transition. We had our first parent presentation last Thursday evening. Small turnout, but overall, the presentation went really well. The information was very well received. And then, we have another one that's being scheduled that will be held on the 7th and Ju, the evening of the 7th in June. We are piloting the level system in two buildings next year, Lone Pine and BHMS. And we will be moving, then moving to full implementation across all buildings in the fall of 2023. We felt it was best to try and pilot the programs and the systems first, to try and work through some of the nuances of making this shift before doing full implementation, and that full implementation would make the most sense, given that we're going to be making all of the transitions from a grade-level configuration going into 2023. We found that there were some scheduling issues that we had to work through, knowing that the middle schools were running both an elementary schedule and a middle school schedule as we went through this process.
Jen, could you just give us a brief overview of what the level system is and how it's different from what we're doing today?
Sure. So, how we're operating currently, our continuum of services exists of resource room classrooms in every building. And then, we have some buildings that have the ARP classrooms and some that have the F, request to approve EviroClean contract extension. Jacob McDermott, Director of Physical Plant Services. I move the Board of Education approve the two-year custodial service contract extension with EviroClean to provide custodial services for the 2022, '23, and 2023, '24 physical years totaling not to exceed $2,335,180 and $2,464,228 respectively, and authorizing the superintendent to finalize the terms of the extension. G, request to approve HR actions. Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's that? All right, moving on to eight general discussion. A, special education equity update and Wing Lake Developmental Center MACIP update with Jen Perone, Margaret Schultz, Rebecca Anders, and Trevor Harker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't want to touch anything.
No worries. She just told me where we have it. There you go, and then you can just arrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, good evening. We're here for our annual update around special education. Oops, oh, boy. We need napkins.
In case you needed applause in your presentation.
We appreciate the effort. Do we know it?
Speaking of custodial contracts.
Thanks for getting that cleaned up so quickly.
Never had such good target.
All right. So, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jennifer Perone, the Director of Special Education. And then with me, Margaret Schultz, Director of Equity. Rebecca Anders, Supervisor for Wing Lake. Trevor should be walking through the door at any moment, so we'll introduce him when he comes in. And then we also have two speech therapists who are going to be presenting with us tonight as well. Amy Goldman and Mallory Frank will be joining the presentation as well. So we'll start by just giving you an update on the level system and where we are with the transition. We had our first parent presentation last Thursday evening. Small turnout, but overall, the presentation went really well. The information was very well received. And then we have another one that's being scheduled that will be held on the seventh evening of the seventh in June. We are piloting the level system in two buildings next year, Lone Pine and BHMS, and we will be then moving to full implementation across all buildings in the fall of 2023. We felt it was best to try and pilot the programs and the systems first, to try and work through some of the nuances of making this shift before doing full implementation, and that full implementation would make the most sense, given that we're going to be making all of the transitions from a grade-level configuration going into 2023. We found that there were some scheduling issues that we had to work through, knowing that the middle schools were running both an elementary schedule and a middle school schedule as we went through this process.
Jen, could you just give us a brief overview of what the level system is and how it's different from what we're doing today?
Sure. So how we're operating currently, our continuum of services exists of resource room classrooms in every building, and then we have some buildings that have the ARP classrooms and some that have the FRP classrooms. What we don't offer right now is what would be considered a full continuum of services for all of students, all of our students in every building. And then along with that, and I'll apologize, I've been really sick the last few days, and so if I seem a little off, it's because of that. Moving to a level system allows for us to increase our continuum of services, bring students back from center programs, which we've already started to do. It also gives students an opportunity to remain in their home school without having to be, having to move to other buildings to receive services. But really, what we're focusing on most with the level program, and it's actually my next slide, is really focusing in on a system that instead of trying to put round squares or round circles into square pegs, we're actually trying to build a system that can meet the needs of all of the students that we have with their varying needs. So right now, when students are placed, they're typically only placed in one program. They're either resource or they're self-contained, and they might be self-contained in different classrooms. With this, it allows students to move from classroom to classroom to get the supports that they need that are very targeted and specific to what the students' individual needs are. And it also allows teachers to really focus and hone in on their instructional practices instead of trying to teach students who might be, from a curricular standpoint, from point A to point B, they can now tailor and really focus that instruction in a very targeted area.
Thank you.
So when we look at the outcomes of what we're hoping for the system, is that, one, it puts us in compliance, because right now, we're not. We're operating programs that the rules align with the law, but the program names themselves don't align to anything that exists. And so we're operating classrooms right now, ARP and FRP, that don't, they don't attach themselves to any of the special education rules that are out there. So what this does is it brings us back in line with that, is all of our programming will be identified as resource room. So right now, our ARP is identified as mild cognitive impaired, and our FRP is moderately cognitive impaired. And so we're looking to have all of them be resource so that we can move away from any, anything that would label a child to have to go into one particular program. And then, as I said, expand our continuum of service and then really focus on those research-based strategies and interventions and make sure that they're being distributed and consistent across all of our buildings. And then, as I said, a system that's really focused, that we're less focused on what programs we run and more focused on what the students need.
Jump in here for a second. So we wanted to just share a little bit about some of the capacity building and professional learning for our teachers across the district that has been happening, and then we'll talk about also what is upcoming. So this year, this is the first time we have ever had all of our staff, all of our teachers across the district in the same training for anti-bias. And so the Anti-Defamation League came in for two different after-school professional learning and trained, worked with our teachers, counselors, social workers, and administrators, which was, we, I just actually met with our contact at the ADL and went through a lot of the feedback from the training, which was all really positive. And Pat and I have been going into all of the buildings and doing updates with the staff on equity work and been also gathering feedback there. So getting a lot of positive feedback from staff on the direction that we're moving. I think the fact that we now all have a common language from using that training, and I'll talk a little bit in a bit about No Place for Hate, but some of that work is helping really to unify across the district, so that's been really powerful. We also had MDE and MoASH come in and provide training on supporting our LGBTQIA+ students for both administrators, social workers, or for administrators, social workers, and counselors.
MoASH is what?
Michigan Organization for Adolescent Sexual Health. Yeah, so they're a branch of the MDE. I think I said that correctly.
You need to cover the acronyms.
Yeah, we have a lot of acronyms in education, that's kind of our jam. So, yeah, so that training we did earlier in the year, and then we also have, the same people are providing an opportunity for our families on June 1st to participate as well in a similar type workshop. So those are coming up.
And we've had several opportunities for professional development for staff throughout, special ed staff throughout the year as well, kind of again, leading into that work into the systems change. So we spent quite a bit of time in the first half of the year focusing on the peer-to-peer program and making sure that we're launching that across every building. They receive training in meeting mechanics so that we're really trying to work on, as we're holding meetings, we're doing so with efficiency, but also with students as that primary focus when we're presenting. And then we also did some presenting just on the level system itself. And then, along in collaboration with our coaches, they also did a lot of the training around the level system, but also have been in buildings doing either small group professional development or working in classrooms with teachers, and then have spent kind of the second half of the year doing a lot of work as it lives into our transition to the level system. So they went through and they reviewed every single student's IEP in the district, took all of that information and compiled it, and then have continued to go back to the buildings over the last several months to work with teams over what that transition will look like for each of the students that they have and begin to have those conversations.
So, and just in continuing that, this summer, we're looking at, you know, one of our goals has been to train all of our staff in restorative practices. So we have some restorative practices training this summer for both people that have not ever had any training and also those that have been trained but would like kind of a refresher. So we're offering both of those. And we're looking at Susan Golab and myself and Keith are working on potentially offering to all new teachers when they come in so that we can kind of keep that capacity without trying to catch people, if we can grab some of our new teacher time to do that so that we can keep that capacity up. So we're excited about that potential. And then what is exciting, in the past, we've had the Institute for Healing Racism and Dismantling Racism, and the partners that I've worked with have kind of like moved in and out of their districts. And so this year, we're going to partner with Rochester Public Schools and have some, we're calling it global equity training, but it would be similar to those previous trainings that we've had, but really talking about bias and tackling discrimination and things like that. So that training will be offered this summer, so I'm really excited about the partnership with Rochester there.
And then we're also offering for special education staff this summer, two different opportunities for training as well. The first training that we're offering in June is going to focus on universal design for learning, which is actually more of a special or general education concept, but all of the strategies that they talk about in terms of universal strategies and supports for students most certainly apply to our students with disabilities. And then also, we're in August offering some training around self-regulation behaviors, being able to really kind of address what we're seeing as a heightened area of need across the district. And then, as we go into more capacity building and professional development into next year, our focus here, again, we will carry over some of the professional development that we're offering this summer for those that are not able to attend. We're also focusing on a different way for us to do our IEPs going forward so that our IEPs become more needs-based, and so they kind of align with the language that we're using in the level system. And talking about moving into a format where, as we write our evaluation reports, that language that we're using in the IEP is something that is addressed in the evaluation, so you can see that continuation of that language in all aspects of our special education paperwork.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add here is that prior to, prior to 2020, we always had several sessions throughout the year for equity leadership training with students, and unfortunately have not been able to offer those the last couple of years, so the plan is to start bringing those back as well. So having equity training across the year for different student groups. So I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like yet, but we know it's going to come back, so I'm excited to get back into that, because that was definitely missing the last couple of years.
And we'll also be continuing our focus around the executive functioning piece, which we know is very prevalent across all of our buildings, again, with both special education in the special education realm, but also in general education classrooms. And that's where some of the work of our coaches is going to take place, where they're going to be, again, going into classrooms. If students are struggling, they're going to be going into those rooms, and they're going to be providing that support and instruction right there alongside the teacher, as opposed to sending students out of a classroom, they're going to be pushing a lot of that work in. We're also going to be offering for all of our social workers and psychologists a new way in rethinking how we write behavior plans, how we do functional behavior assessments, and trying to, again, be very consistent about these processes across the district.
So the one big bucket that I wanted to make sure I shared with you was about No Place for Hate, which is obviously in, with our partnership with the Anti-Defamation League. It is a program that is led by the Anti-Defamation League across the country, and all of our students, all of our schools, next year will be working towards becoming No Place for Hate schools. Our global education team started the process this year. I actually had the pleasure of being at Conant's Global Education Team meeting today, where there are some fourth-grade students that had an exhibition project on racism, actually presented to the third-grade students who will be leading the No Place for Hate work next year, and they asked me to come and present just a little bit with them in partnership with the fourth-grade students. And it was fantastic, and the students were starting to generate like, what are some, what are some things that Conant does really well, and what are some things that Conant needs to work on? So it was just really powerful to see a group of about 25 third-grade students really digging into what it meant to be No Place for Hate and starting to generate ideas around what that would look like. And so that is kind of what we've been doing so far this year. In the fall, all of our schools will have kind of a big kickoff celebration where everyone signs a pledge saying that they're in, that we're going to work towards becoming No Place for Hate schools. We're going to use the climate survey results that we had, both the Equity and Inclusion Survey and the Social Emotional Learning Survey. So those two surveys are really going to become the data that leads us into what we need to do, and we're also going to be spending time interviewing students. Because some of those surveys, like the earliest grades, we could get our third grade, we also still want to get the voices of our kindergarten, first and second grade students as well. So it'll, that comes more in like small conversations or one-on-one conversations. We often call those empathy interviews or listening sessions, things like that. So that will be the data that we're using. And then they require school-wide activities. So that's what the kids will be creating, it needs to be student-led, but we will have school-wide activities throughout the year with then kind of a final celebration at the end where we get our banner. So, yeah, I'm really excited about the work. I think we, the timeline we built has made, I think our schools right now are feeling confident in becoming No Place for Hate next year, so I'm excited about where this is headed.
So some fun stuff from this year. We launched Unified Sports for the first time this year in the district. The kids had an amazing time. We are very grateful to Amy Scott, who took on this endeavor at the high school and is certainly looking to continue this into next year, and we're looking to hopefully expand this to include the middle school, but then also include other sports activities as well. And then just some photos of the bond work. I know that you've probably seen many of these, but we wanted to share, this is specific to some of the special education spaces at BHMS. So this is, as you can see, we've got a courtyard out there that the students will have access to for activities, and then these are some of the educational spaces that they're building. But really, the focus of the bond work across the entire district is to create very inclusive spaces. And we're being very intentional about making sure that all of the spaces in each of the buildings are very equalized across the district, so that each building has the same level of service provided to them, but then they also have the same level of physical spaces as well. And so we're going to have flexible spaces to meet all of the needs. Every building will have a sensory room, exercise room at the secondary level, they'll have quiet rooms, classrooms with bathrooms, dedicated spaces in central locations that students can focus on their daily living skills, there'll be full kitchens and laundry areas where the students can work on some of those things as well, and then talking about accessibility and accommodations throughout all of our buildings. Okay, with that, I'm going to have our speech therapist come up, and they're going to share a little bit about what they do to support our students in the district.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm Amy Goldman, this is Mallory Frank. Part of why we wanted this included is May is Better Speech and Hearing Month, so we have been focusing on getting our voice heard a little bit out there. What we do has come a long way since the days where we just focused on fixing Rs and Ls in school, which we still do a lot of that as well. But the scope of our practice really has widened quite a bit. We have 15 speech pathologists in the Bloomfield Hills School District to cover all the way from zero to 26 years old. So our scope of practice aligns with all the Michigan academic standards. When we write a goal in an IEP, we do align with those academic standards. We focus on early literacy, social-emotional learning, all the way up to graduation, equality of opportunities, functional life skills, things like that. We do reading comprehension, writing, even focusing on math, the language skills of math. Our math curriculum these days, the kids have to explain themselves, there's a lot of vocabulary in math, social studies and science. So we focus on all of those areas, as well as still fixing those Rs and Ls that kids still can't pronounce correctly. So just, that's a little bit about what we do.
Yes, so a part of our vision as a department is to use a systematic approach to work with our students and families, and we really value working with our colleagues as well. So we're, our hope is to help all students communicate to the best of their ability to facilitate engagement within the classroom, and we do this in a variety of ways. A lot of data collection, like I said, working with other colleagues, teachers, social workers, physical therapists, occupational therapists, the list could go on. And we focus a lot on prevention and treatment, too. As you can see from some of the numbers above, speech and language impairment is one of the most common childhood disorders, medically speaking. And then, across Oakland County, in respect to education and special education eligibility, we are, speech and language impairment is the second most common eligibility out of the 13 areas. And then, just to reinforce the importance of a speech and language pathologist in your schools, is that children who struggle with communication skills, whether it be social communication, receptive and expressive vocabulary, sentence structure, or saying their Ss and Rs, they are six to eight times more likely to struggle across all areas of academics. So the earlier we treat, the better, and the better the outcomes are so that children can develop a functional way to communicate.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any other questions? But I just wanted, my son was a part of the Early On program, and so he is, he enjoys telling jokes, and he also has a great time reading. I record him reading and send it to his grandparents, and so we definitely appreciate the program, like you said, zero to...
Twenty-six? Zero to twenty-six? That's a wide range.
So definitely, he is definitely a story to tell from the program.
I also just wanted to say thank you, thanks to Amy Goldman. My two younger children and I spent four and a half hours driving up north to Roger Federer repeatedly in the backseat.
Yep, I remember.
But, yeah, remember? Thank you.
So, all right, well, thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to come in today to present to you. I'm going to throw in a shameless plug. I was a couple minutes late. I was at our ASL classes over at Eastover. We have ASL classes there on Tuesday nights. We, this is something that has been a staple in the DHH community for years, and we were derailed by COVID. So we are back up and running. We sent a survey out to the community, we had 100 responses, and we have three classes going on right now, and we're going to continue in the fall. So I rushed over here, I'm here now, and I'm excited to talk about our DHH program. So for those that don't know me, my name is Trevor Harker. I'm one of the two special education supervisors within the district, and part of my responsibilities is to oversee the deaf and hard-of-hearing program. For those that don't know, the deaf and hard-of-hearing program is a treasure here in Bloomfield Hills Schools and has been a part of the community since 1965. Now, that's hard to believe. Currently, the district is home to approximately 58 deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and we're in four different buildings. We are in Fox Hills, integrated into that program. We are in Eastover Elementary, East Hills Middle School, and Bloomfield Hills High School. You've already heard tonight about the exciting updates regarding our district moving forward to raise the bar in the world of special education. to raise the bar in the world of special education and the adoption of our leveled system, which I will be supporting as well. But today, I'd also like to share some brief updates with you regarding the DHH program itself. Let me start off by saying that there's probably some staff in here, listening here tonight, or that will hear about this. And they're going to cringe when I tell you what, the phrase that I'm going to speak about tonight in the DHH program. And it's all about moving us forward. The three words and the three phrases I've learned, or I've preached to everybody within the program, myself as a leader and our staff, is the expectation that we continue to reflect, modify, and improve our practices as we move forward. So the DHH Forward is really about a committee getting together to look at what's working within the program, what's not, where are there gaps, where are there areas of needed improvement, and how do we meet and increase the outcomes for our students? To start, I'd like to highlight our outside partnerships that help us help others. And these organizations really allow us to go above and beyond what typically a school district would be able to do in order to support kids. So a couple of the community partnerships that we have within the DHH program is Ascension Hospital Systems and Holly Institute. They provide camps free of charge for some of our students that are nominated throughout the summer. It's a teen week camp where they learn about advocacy, they learn about accessibility and independence as deaf and hard-of-hearing students and children. And they also offer us free field trip opportunities throughout the year, not only for our students, but they are looking for our staff to go there as well to be provided with specialized learning opportunities in deaf and hard-of-hearing and advocacy. Another partnership we have is with Hands and Voices, and that's an organization that supports deaf and hard-of-hearing students and families. And we have a session called Keep Calm and Ask Me. And this session, Hands and Voices puts it on. And there are two deaf guides that are part of this presentation. We do three a year. And the deaf guides come from different backgrounds, different experiences. And it allows parents to go in to listen to different points of views, to different supports that maybe they were offered, and really learn about how did this deaf or hard-of-hearing adult get from where they were in school to being successful for today? So our parents are able to go to this session, ask questions, and learn more about what they can do to support their students and what we can do as well. We also have partnerships with the Detroit Institute of Arts and Deaf Can. Last year, we brought a deaf artist in, Nancy Burick. And this year, we've partnered with them to provide some opportunities for our students to go to the DIA and to be provided with tours of the DIA with interpreters provided by Deaf Can. And then next year, we're looking to bring all of our students in. And they are creating an opportunity for our deaf-blind students to go to make art in Detroit at the institute. And the last one we have here is Deaf Blind Central. And that's through Central Michigan University. And they provide consulting support to us and work hand-in-hand as we determine. And we consider some of the supports that students are awarded through the IEP. For example, when we have a student who may be receiving additional support for deaf blindness, we ask ourselves, is this something maybe that a paraprofessional could support? Or something that an intervenor, somebody that is specialized in the area of deaf-blind? So Deaf Can, I'm sorry, Deaf Blind Central helps us to figure out which one is best. Within the program, we are able to provide above and beyond what typically may be provided in school districts due to the continued partnerships and the organizations that you see tonight. These partnerships allow us to offer low-cost or free support to families. The experiences guide our students on their path to independence as they venture out after high school. And the focus of these programs and resources are based on feedback from families and surveys that are sent out yearly and student data on areas of needed support. So as an administrator, I feel it's my responsibility whenever we're making decisions within the program to make sure that there are stakeholder voices in some of those big changes that we're making. As somebody, I've been in this program for three years now. Seems like a lot more with COVID. I think it was five months before I got, after I got started that COVID hit. But one thing I've made sure to do is making sure that every big decision that's made, every discussion that could change the way the program is run, that we include the stakeholders, and that includes our deaf staff as well. We have about five deaf staff here within our program. And that's why we've been working really closely with Karen to make sure that accessibility is a priority across the district so that they feel welcome as part of our community. In addition, the DHH Forward Committee was developed to do just this and is to make sure that there's stakeholders involved in the movement forward for this program. The DHH Forward Committee includes staff, intervenors, paraprofessionals, deaf staff as well. And this year, the focus is on ELA and literacy. And this is an area that is a real struggle for our DHH learners. And this committee has been working to focus on what do we need to do to move our students forward? This year, we've really focused on identifying research-based practices. We brought in some experts from the field to show us what we need to do to get to that next step. So next, as we move forward through this year, we have one more meeting. And then next year, we're going to be really focusing on that ELA and literacy piece to really set the bar as far as what Michigan is offering our deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Speaking of 2022-2023 school year, the focus of myself as the administrator in the program is really going to be focused on informing district staff and Oakland County Special Education providers on who we are as a DHH program and what we have to offer, along with streamlining literacy instruction and high-leverage practices that support the DHH Forward Committee. Throughout the last few years, there have been a lot of turnover within our county. And I want to make sure that everybody is aware of what we offer, why we're here. And we want to be as much of a support for our families as possible. And we really want them to know how we can truly change the lives of our DHH learners out there. So in addition, we are going to continue to offer classroom tours for all of you. This year, and I saw you guys snickering over there about the picture here on the screen. It was wonderful to have Jennifer and Howard join us just a few weeks, feels like weeks, doesn't it? A few days ago. I know that work and personal schedules may interfere with the ability to join during the school day. I will also offer some time after school if anybody wants to discuss, okay? We can move around the buildings. We can have some deep, meaningful discussions about the DHH program. And Jennifer had the opportunity, I know she's not here tonight, but she had the opportunity to join one of our East Hills Middle School classrooms, where she participated in a game of Would You Rather? As you can imagine, with seventh graders, it was pretty comical. And Howard, you had the opportunity to go to our elementary school and learn a couple signs in ASL. Now, I'm really tempted right now, but I did promise you I wouldn't test you on your ASL skills during this presentation. So you're off the hook. Good and bad, yeah, that was right. I learned some more tonight that I'm going to share with you after today. All about food. It's a good topic. So to end here today, I do want to share some celebrations of our DHH program. And please know that there are many celebrations that I won't be able to speak to today. And we are so proud of everybody for what they've accomplished this school year. The first thing I want to touch on is that we have five students who attend our DHH program who are graduating this year with their high school diploma. These students are on their path to success as they attend Hope College, Gallaudet University, Rochester Institute of Technology. One student is going to a trade school to be a mechanic. And another student is going to the Michigan Institute of Aviation and Technology. In addition to that, we're excited to announce that a group of our DHH students in seventh grade are going to be attending the high school graduation to perform the National Anthem in ASL. All very exciting things. This year, we had multiple students on sport teams, including track, basketball, swimming, and more, and some who were top performers in their events. So I'd like to congratulate them. And our seventh grade students, with the support of our ASL specialist Diana Campbell, competed in the Marie Jean Philip or MJP competition, which is an ASL storytelling competition. There were 13 schools of the deaf that participated. And Bloomfield Hills Schools' DHH was the only integrated total communication program that participated. This was their first year in this competition, and one of our students won third place. So congratulations to the seventh grade class and our third grade, or I'm sorry, third-place winner. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or to request a tour. We'd be happy to have you. Any questions?
Make a little statement, though. Trevor was very, very kind to invite us all. And as he said, Jennifer and I took advantage, took him up on his offer. So I was at the elementary school, Jennifer was at the middle school. One of the things at this table that we discussed about four or five years ago is that the Gen Ed teachers were not as familiar with special education needs and the IEPs that their students had. And I'm so impressed with what Jen has been doing with the Level Program and then what Trevor is doing, which is as much as possible, whatever is in the best interest of the student, integrating the Gen Ed and the special education students together. Obviously, in all cases, you know, Wing Lake in particular, it really doesn't fit. But really trying to bring those two communities together, not only the kids with the kids, but the adults with the adults, the special education teachers and the Gen Ed teachers. So that there is less of a transition between them. And it really improves the education for all the children in both sides of the fence there. So thank you very much for all the work that you've been doing.
Thank you 100%. And as we talked about, our students come to us with a range of abilities. There are some students that are more self-contained, other students that are out in the Gen Ed classroom with some accommodations and support. And when Howard came to visit our program, one of the, I made him watch a couple of videos before we went into the classrooms. And one of the videos was a presentation that the DHH staff put together to provide to general education teachers at the beginning of the year so that they understood coming in the door, what do I need to do to support one of my students in my classroom that I might not be familiar with? So we're headed in the right direction, and thank you so much.
And I now know so much more about caterpillars and butterflies.
Yes.
I only wanted to add, and really quick, that in bullet point number two, community partners. I'm excited to see our list of dedicated community partners. And hopefully, you know, given your presentation and the work and dedication that you've placed and your team has placed on our Deaf and Hard of Hearing program, that hopefully, in addition to Ascension Hospital Systems, Holly Institute, Hands and Voices, DIA and Deaf Cam, Blind, Deaf Central, that that list continues to grow. So hopefully, there are others that are listening and watching your presentation today, and will get additional support for your, for our students.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So thanks for the tremendous work that all of you do in your various programs. Specific to DHH, how many students overall in the district go through this program? And does it fluctuate from year to year?
Fluctuates from year to year, yeah. So students are referred to our program from resident districts, right? So the resident district would receive a student in their district, and they would determine, do we have the supports that are available to support them, right, within district? And if they don't, then they send a referral to Oakland Schools called a District Service Request. And it comes to us, and we go through the IEP process to determine if the student's programming should happen here in Bloomfield Hills at the DHH program.
And so what is our current strength of students in the program?
We have 58 students in our program.
How many are Bloomfield Hills students, do you know?
I don't know. I can get you that number very easily, but I don't want to say a number that's incorrect.
Those are 50 students from all of the county.
Yeah, all Oakland County.
Okay, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I do have questions.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know what you were going around.
And I also have a feeling that the presentation's not over, so, okay. No, no, because they're not for Trevor. Although, I just want, you know, thank you for the excellent report. But there are overall questions, so I was going to ask if...
Well, I'll go ahead and talk about Wing Lake. As Trevor shared, we are both, as special ed supervisors, very excited to be partnering with Jen and the entire special ed department on the levels work. I have a child who's in a Level Four room in another district. And it's so amazing to not focus on a label, but focus on individual needs. And I cannot wait for that to happen here in Bloomfield for our students. So Wing Lake, we have tons to celebrate this year. This is a picture of our prom. The lady in the middle with the white shirt is Beth Monroe. She's been a teacher or staff member at Wing Lake for a long time. She started the prom 20 years ago. And she really is a breath of fresh air when it came to prom this year. It was our first prom in three years that was in-person. And we were able to bring all of our classrooms, the adult, four adult transition classrooms, down to the gym. We had a great time, and I know some of you came out, so thank you for that and spending time with us. So we have a lot to celebrate. Despite the pandemic, we have been focusing on literacy, numeracy. We have been really focusing on social emotional learning and global equity. And then we have seven graduates this year. Our graduation is coming up on June 3rd. Pat is our speaker. And we have 16 referrals right now, which is incredibly busy. So we're very excited about our referrals, but we're trying to make sure that we have everyone in, which includes going out and observing students, having families come and tour our program, and then having the resident district hold IEPs. We're trying to make sure that we have all of that done so that we can start our new students on July 12th, which is our first day of our new school year. So this year, we focused on math. And so we have been partnering really closely with the Learning Services Team. We have staff from Wing Lake that have been participating in the district MYKIP meetings. We also combined our school improvement team and our curriculum team at Wing Lake into a MYKIP team. And so we have been very intentional. And so after five years of focusing on emergent literacy and really going strong at that, this year as a group, we decided that we were going to primarily focus on math. And so our goal for math was to work on closing the opportunity gap by implementing research-based, hands-on, and experiential instructional opportunities that are embedded in both sensory and functional experiences. Going into this, I'll admit, it was a little scary for some of our Wing Lake staff. We get really nervous about can our students make progress? And they do. They make progress in little segments. And sometimes because of medical needs and especially some COVID-related absences, sometimes our students regress, and sometimes they just sort of plateau for a while, too. But what this year showed us is that our students can and do learn, and they do make progress. So we're really excited to show you that over the next few slides. This year was the first year that our students took the K-9 benchmark assessments. And so that involved our MYKIP team at the building level, researching and looking and finding out from across the state what are other SXI and SCI programs using as benchmark assessments? Because standardized tests are not always the most appropriate. And then once we figured out what we were going to use and decided to work on math, we really made sure that we were very intentional in our lesson planning. And so we have three grade bands at Wing Lake. Elementary and pre-K is one, middle school and high school is another, and then adult transition. And so the teachers really focused on coherent and collaborative lesson planning. We also ensured that all of our PD aligned with our building goals and then our district goals as well. So we had a building goal that I just actually read to you. And so we developed a rubric. And then with that, we had our staff give all students a pre-test in the early February and then do five weeks of very intentional math instruction. A lot of times in the past, math instruction has been using PIP cards, which are little dots on cards, so five dots on a card, or other tangibles. This year, with the help of Shauna White from Oakland Schools, we focused on truly showing students the numeral. And so we were very, very excited with the data. Remember, at Wing Lake, the majority, the goal is that attaining or maintaining is just as important as improving or surpassing. And so 94% of our students who were assessed attained or surpassed from the pre-to-post test. When my staff saw this, I felt like, it was just amazing. Like, I think we all wanted to cry. And we saw, I showed them this data last week. And then this week, I've been meeting with all of the teachers for their evals, and almost every single person commented about the data and how excited they were that for the first time, they really wanted to speak to the data that we took at Wing Lake on academics. they really wanted to speak to the data that we took at Wing Lake on academics versus just IEP goals. So that takes me to the next slide. This is our math and reading data based on our benchmark assessments. Carrie has spent probably 50 hours this year helping me put all of this together. Our points of pride are in math, all but one grade level increased in math from winter to spring by .5 to 2 points, which is amazing. And our overall growth for ELA is that we had improvement in all of the subgroups. And so in ELA, we did drop a little bit from fall to spring. We also had some COVID cases that, there as well as, again, we were really focused on numeracy. Of course, we are embedding literacy and numeracy into everything that we do all day long. And so even during physical therapy sessions, we're counting, we're doing some reading and we're talking about core words. Core is the 36 most common words in our vocabulary. We use those. Every student at Wing Lake uses core. We've also increased immensely, increased the usage of AAC devices. I think we've went, since I've been at Wing Lake, we've went, and this is with the help of our speech paths, we've went from maybe five to 10 devices to more than 70% of our building is using devices now. It is incredible, the spontaneous talk that is happening within, between students. And so sometimes they, they, using their devices tell each other to be quiet or during the middle of school. One time I went in and I was sharing with the staff, I said, oh, this is, this is gonna happen today. And the students looked at me and said, what about me using her device? And so it was incredible to see that and that students really are, at the zoo, for example, we just had a classroom on Monday go to the zoo, room 11, one of our adult transition rooms, and our speech path went with them. And all of the students had their devices and when the teacher and the speech path got back, they came running into my office and they were so excited to share that when, when they were at the zoo, people were coming up to them because they could not believe the comments that the students were making about the different animals. And so they were just amazed and wanting to learn about the AAC devices.
AAC is?
Augmentative and alternative communication. So again, here with our, let's see. So another thing that was very exciting this year is we did our first annual education report. And so again, we have been very committed to social emotional learning, global equity. And our social worker in school psychologists have curated resources throughout the last two years and put into our library a huge set of books on SEL and GET. And then also we took the district cultural observances calendar and put some family-friendly videos and books on there that our students could read at home with their families. Another very exciting thing that has happened is that thanks to learning services team, we are part of the egg incubation and hatching program. And so this week, we've had six little chicks born. And so that's been super cool. They're all located in one classroom and that teacher, because we're still poding to try to keep most of our classrooms separated with COVID, knowing that the majority of our students do not mask, she put her dot cam on top of the area where the chicks are and she zoomed in every other classroom so that they could watch as the chicks were hatching out of the eggs. So it was super cool. We also collected a truckload. So thank you to Jake for delivering a truck to help us get all of our donations to the church that we delivered them to for Ukraine. That was very exciting. We've been partnering with the nature center and Bowers Farm, so we have students that are going out to the nature center. They're feeding deer, they're cleaning up pathways. So that's really exciting. And probably the most recent one was the multicultural fair. The picture that you see with the students in the top right corner, one of our parents came in and did the hand art with our students using all sort of, all sorts of adapted art supplies and tools. And they put together a huge canvas that I know, Pat, you mentioned you would love to have here. So we're willing to loan it out temporarily before we find a spot for it at Wing Lake. But it's, it's a piece of work that we're very proud of and that we were able to share out over at the high school that night, all about our program. So with that, we are also excited that in the fall, the theater students from the high school came and sang at our open house. That was very exciting. We have, Officer Marissa comes over all the time and brings her dog to visit, but we also had fur angels. Thank you, Margaret, for setting that up for us. And room seven wanted me to share with you that on a very rainy, cold day, they were planning a beach trip and they asked me to let you know that they wanted to fund a trip to Turks and Caicos. They said, tell the board, we want to go to Turks and Caicos. So I said, okay.
So do we.
So, and overall, you know, over the next school year, our focus is going to be really on, how do we share all of this wonderful data that we collected this year with our parent community? How do we use that to drive instruction? And then how do we partner more with our district buildings? And so that we can really partner up and bring some of our district students into Wing Lake and go out and visit some of our other buildings as well. So I think that is the last slide. Wing Lake wanted to present one of our micro-business items, so our Sweet Blooms items. So this is for the board and you have a flyer about that micro-business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Hawaii was a close second, though.
I know Lisa had a question.
Does anyone else?
Howard does it also.
So one of the questions, Howard touched on a little bit, and that is integrating staff, all staff in gen ed to make sure that they, that they're aware of and know how to accommodate IEPs and some other accommodations that are needed. And it is really, really great to hear. I know that that has been an undertaking that's more difficult than it seems like it would be. So I appreciate hearing that. Here, here are my questions. Jennifer, you said that there are different, that you're working on different ways of doing IEP plans and reports. And you touched on consistent language as being part of one of the changes. But I'm kind of curious what the other changes are and then I, I think I may have a follow-up question to that, depending on what the answer is.
So what we're trying to do is really focus the language that we're putting into IEPs to really align to how we've developed the level system. And with that, we really focus around, like, you can talk about how a student is able to work on literacy and what supports they may need, but we want to know, how independent are they in that work, right? How much support might they need? How does that impact them when they're outside of that special education setting? What does that look like in terms of their, their ability for social interactions? What does it look like for engagement for them in these environments? And so we're trying to make sure that everything that we're putting into the IEPs as we go forward is more focused on not just what a student can and can't do, but what does it look like when they can do it? And then what does it look like when they can't do it so that we can really hone in more specifically targeting those needs? Because it's easy to say that a student has a deficiency or struggles with reading comprehension, but what does that look like for them? So we're really trying to kind of dive deeper when we're focusing on that language so that no matter who picks up the IEP and where they might go, they're gonna know exactly what they need to target.
So do you think that language may account for some of the disparity that sometimes we hear about between what, what's being reported is happening with an IEP? I assume these happen during different reports, during the year, different IEP meetings, and what parents are seeing at home? Isn't that they lack common language or maybe common terms? Is that part of it? And how much is not related?
I mean, I will tell you that, you know, students act differently at school than they do at home too, right? And so you tend to see some of that, you know, differences in whether it's behavior or academics than what they might see in a school setting. So a lot of that is based around like just the expectations that are put in place, being in a more structured environment. All of those things can either help a student or frustrate a student.
So when there's an IEP meeting and there are, you know, gaps or disparities pointed out between what parents are seeing at home and what you're seeing, what teachers are seeing in school, is there room other than just maybe redefining language, which I do agree will probably help a lot of it? But is there room to modify the IEP with input? For, I mean, how much does a parent's observations at home go into the modification or adjustment of it?
Yeah, so I will tell you that for any IEP, if a parent was to say, well, we don't see a student, you know, we don't see our child doing that at home, right? Or we see this happening at home, but you're not seeing in a school. We make sure that under the present level statement that we would indicate, like, parents have indicated that this is what's happening. Because we do try and bridge that gap between what's happening at home and what's happening at school so that the strategies are similar.
Okay. I have one more question, but Howard, I don't know if anyone else does.
Trevor, can you come up for a second?
Sorry, I.
Trevor and I had a very interesting conversation. If you could just tell us, you, you charge tuition to the different districts for your program. How much is that tuition again?
I don't have an exact number. I can get you that number. I believe it is around
Range, yeah.
$50,000 to $60,000 a student. And that is all-inclusive, right? So it doesn't matter what your student needs in order to be successful within our program or what supports and accommodations. It's all the one, one price. And it's through Oakland Schools, the DSR, that district service request and the tuition, which makes up our budget.
So it kind of links in what I learned there last Friday to my advocacy work that I do for our district and Oakland Schools in terms of, you know, special education is very, very expensive. And the amount of money that we get from the federal government is way underfunded and has been for 50 years. So when we go down to Washington DC and talk to our US representatives and US senators, we ask them to fully fund IDEA, which would bring back about a billion dollars a year to the state of Michigan. And about three, about four or five million, I think, from, for this district. Because if we have a deaf and hard of hearing student and then, or a Wing Lake student, we don't get the kind of funding and we have to take money out of our general ed funds and, and pay for the wonderful work that these guys do. So it's really linking the academic stuff that these guys do, an incredible job, with kind of the advocacy work that many of us do to try to link the two processes together.
Do you have a question for Trevor?
That was it. Just trying to, all right. Well, the question was related to $50,000 or $60,000. I mean, I knew that Wing Lake, put it this way, the picture you saw there with me sitting in a classroom, there were equal number of teachers or adults as there were children. So not just a teacher and a parapro, but then an intervenor and an interpreter and two, there were two teachers there. There were, I counted, there were as many students or teach, adults as there were kids. That's why, $50,000 or $60,000.
We're happy you had 100 individuals at your meeting tonight, so that, that's amazing.
Paul, we have a question. Thank you. Thank everyone for their presentation. Just a question, you know, looking at some of the data, we have a lot of data on Wing Lake. Do we have data on how many students in our district have IEPs? How many students have 504s? What's their level in terms of testing year over year? Do we have that type of data?
So we do. It's all at the building level. So we don't necessarily have that data. Like overall, they tend to keep that at the district level by grade. But the number of students that we have with IEPs, yes, we have approximately 850 students with IEPs. And I think right around 400 students with 504s. I will tell you, the number of students with 504s has increased exponentially over the last few years.
Just on that, what is the number, what's the number one for 504s? What's the number one reason for 504s, like in terms of?
In our district or?
I mean, let's, let's focus in our district.
Number one's probably ADHD. Number two's probably anxiety.
You got what you need?
I guess it's, I guess it's at the, I'll have to look at the old data on the building.
All right. Great job. So I just have a quick question because we, with the DEI, I, I like what I heard. I want to make sure I heard exactly what you were saying. Now, is it that every new employee or is it just every new incoming teacher that will receive the training?
Oh, for resort of practices. At this point, it's, we're just looking at every new teacher as part of like the new teacher orientation because contractually they have a couple of extra days. So we're looking at building it into the new teacher. Not yet. I think overall, I think ultimately we would like to get to a point where we're training all staff. But right now, yeah, just teachers.
And then I guess my second question is, you spoke of in the beginning about training on anti-defermentary language, anti-bias training for faculty and administrators at the building level. Would that eventually also be something that we have at date of hiring or for incoming teachers and staff members across the district?
That's a good question. That is not something that we have talked about yet. So I, yeah, not yet. But I think that we still have a lot of people that are currently sitting in our buildings that have not been through a training like that. So I think we have a lot of capacity to build. And unfortunately, it's like, I, I lead that and I'm leading it with, her name is Tiffany from Rochester. And it's, it's small. You can only get about 20 Bloomfield people at a time. And so it just takes, yeah, I mean, to figure out how to build capacity a little bit quicker.
So I like your, I like the fact that now you're, you're starting with our, our new hires and it's starting at that point with our, the other initiative. I just think it would be a great segue to also try to capture incoming teachers and staff members in that capacity.
Yeah, I totally agree. And we all always do in any sort of, like with the new, new staff orientation, there's always a piece. So it is definitely always touched on and talked about for all new staff, but not to that level of training. And that's what we kind of need to figure out, what can we bring to scale that's actually manageable for, for us. But yeah.
But thank you. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. I just had one question, I guess for Jen. Do you like, explain what the special education coaches do again? I was, I think I missed it when you were going over it in the presentation.
Sure. So I mean, their, their job description is pretty hefty. What they're focusing on right now is helping us transition to the process to the levels by going into each building, working with each, each team on those, the teachers' caseloads, focusing on those individual students and kind of walking them through the process of how to make those determinations. But long-term, their goals are, and their, their focus is really going to be on those instructional practices in the classrooms. And so they'll be going in and they're going to be doing some small group instruction, individual instruction, professional development. They'll be assisting teachers who are struggling with students either making the accommodations for students with disabilities, but then also.
So I don't want to cut you off. So you, just before, I don't want to, so like the special education teachers or like just in the general ed classrooms they're going in?
They're going into both. So they've been spending time in general education classrooms as well, supporting students specifically with IEPs or 504s in terms of making sure the accommodations are being followed. But then also assisting if they are struggling with a student, either from an instructional standpoint, a behavioral standpoint, that they're going into those classrooms and then supporting within that classroom environment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So I have one more question for the speech language team. Approximately, how many students do we have in that program?
So we actually work on a workload model, which is supported by the American Speech and Hearing Association. So as a law in Michigan, there's a caseload cap for each speech and language pathologist of 60 students. But in our district, as nicely supported by Jen as we are, we use what's called a workload model where we enter data into a system that looks at our workload as a whole. So this is a long explanation for a very short question. It looks at the time we spend with students directly, the time we spend in IEP meetings, the time we spend doing paperwork, the time we spend, and it sort of calculates the amount of time we spend doing our job as a whole. So it's a really nice way to look at. So it's a really nice way to look at, at how much time we spend actually in our building doing our job as a whole. In terms of number of students, overall, I would say each one of us carries a caseload of between.
Between thirty and forty-five.
Thirty and forty-five.
However, in our presentation, we mentioned a lot about the area of speech and language impairment as an area of eligibility for special education. For those students, we are the primary case managers of their IEP paperwork, of their services provided. However, we do provide speech and language services to children of all areas of eligibility, depending on need.
And I would add that those districts that, well, some that have a caseload of 60 have high turnover in staff for this position, just, just so you know that. It is a very demanding position, 100%.
Burnout. And what the data allows us to look at, as I've just spent several days looking at it with Jen, it allows us to look at our staffing with actual data so that we know how many hours we're actually spending doing our job. Do we need to hire? Do we need, you know, where, where do we actually need staff in each of the buildings? It really allows us to look at how many hours it takes us each week to do our job, which is really nice data to have. We have it all in spreadsheets, we update it several times a year on an individual basis. It's nice data to have in terms of staffing.
And in those districts, I would also add that they have less time spent with students and more time spent doing paperwork. So, because they don't have enough time to really dedicate to the individual students' needs.
May I add one more thing? If you ever would like to look at our data, we'd be more than happy to share with you.
Absolutely.
But we, we are part of the teacher contract, so our work hours are the same per week. However, our data is calculated on a 40-hour work week. So it's with the assumption that we work 40 hours.
Does that mean, just to do the math, we're talking 450 to 675 students? Sorry.
Yes.
To get, to get back to your question.
Yes.
We like to talk.
It's part of the job. Yes, that's about right.
I would, I would say the majority of our students who receive services through IEPs, I would say the majority have speech services as well as receiving other special education services.
Have you seen, I'm sorry, have you seen an uptake from previous COVID, last two years in our younger students having additional speech issues because of everything that's gone on last couple of years?
I would say yes, I would say not just younger students. I work at the middle school and I think we've seen an uptick across all levels.
I think, I could speak anecdotally from an elementary perspective. I've noticed an increase in articulation caseload and I think it has a lot to do with mask-wearing. However, I haven't noticed much of a change in language disorders. But that being said too, social communication is a huge piece too. And we've been handling a lot of those situations.
That's where I see it at the older levels too, is that social, social piece.
My question is for Margaret. You mentioned the DEI survey and I'm assuming, is that the panoramic, is that interchangeable? Okay, so, thank you for providing the open-ended responses. One of the things that I noticed was students commenting on how difficult conversations sometimes don't happen, to the extent that they should. So you mentioned teachers getting instruction on different areas and I won't go into detail because Michelle highlighted a lot of them. But are they also getting instruction in how to start and have conversations? Because I, I felt like from student response, a lot of them felt that the deeper level conversations were really lacking. They were somewhat surfacy, if occurring at all. So I'm sort of curious about that particular instruction.
Can I just, just one thing for you? Thanks. So coming back and being in person, masks, no masks and everything that's going on, every student needs a trusted adult. And a lot of times, those conversations don't take place until that student feels that that trusted adult knows them by name and by need. And when a student feels that they're known by that trusted adult by their name and by their need, that opens the opportunity. It can't be perfunctory, it can't be fake. Students know when adults are genuine and when they're not. And they're, they call it out more, more than ever now. So part of it maybe is some training, but really is that ability and time to build relationships. And that's something that we're invested in doing. And we see kind of the data nationally and internationally. I've had the privilege of talking to quite a few teachers and administrators from the UK this year. And they're seeing the same challenges we're seeing. And everyone's got the pressure to do more and get as much done as we can as we want to make sure there's not, you know, that learning loss. Sometimes you need to take a step, you know, a step back and also have a conversation with the student. And as we continue to build those relationships and as students find their trusted adults within buildings, I think they're going to be more apt to having those conversations. No different for any of us here. They're all people in our life that we know we can go to and we trust and we can have those relationships. And when you meet new people, it takes time to build it. And there's sometimes one step forward and two steps back, but eventually you work on it and you build that trust. And there's no, there's no magic pill, there's no magic program that allows that to happen. It's built one conversation at a time. And that's how relationships are built, so I just wanted to preface it with that.
Right. And I, I appreciate that, thank you. From the survey results that I read, I, I was sort of making a distinction between one-on-one relationship conversations and more, more conversations about difficult topics. Not necessarily personal experiences that students. And, you know, conversely, I did think, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the survey results were really positive in terms of students being able to connect with at least one teacher on a one-on-one basis. I was sort of focusing on where maybe there was some room for improvement. So kudos to our teachers for reaching out and being able to make those personal connections. But what I saw in the comments and maybe in the scores as well, maybe I'm wrong about that, was the ability to have the difficult conversations to begin with. And, and some, some reported that it was being done really well, but it didn't seem, it seemed like overall, maybe there, there was room for improvement.
I, I definitely think that's, like, we have room for improvement. I will say in all of our, in all of our training, whether it be restorative practices or anti-bias training, we're always trying to help staff feel more comfortable entering into conversations. And also, what's, which is hard for teachers, as a teacher myself, like, you, you, you stand in front of a classroom and you want to know the answers. And you want to be, when kids come to you, you want to be able to say to them, like, it's going to be okay, here's what, here's what you should do. And the reality is, when you're talking about this type of work, that is, that's not the approach, right? And you have to be vulnerable and understand that you don't have the answers as an adult, which is a really difficult position. And so working on ways that we can have conversations when we don't have the answers for kids that allows them to just feel safe to share where they're at and what they're feeling. And I think that, you know, that is a part of all of our training and everything we do. And, and we still have room to grow and we will always have room to grow there.
And for the older students especially, allowing them a space to have conversations on a little bit deeper level so that they do take away from the conversation, this was something meaningful and not like a check-the-box kind of conversation. You know, that they're, that they didn't really get to, weren't, weren't able to reach a level of conversation that really kind of satisfied what, what they were looking for in terms of connecting with peers and, and building understanding. And I know it's because it's difficult, it is really difficult, I get that, but.
You know, I think it's something that all of our teachers are continuing to work on. And, and some are just, we're all, just as with everything, we're all in different places. But I know it is a desire for our teachers to be able to have, continue to, to grow and be able to have difficult conversations with our students and to be able to help facilitate students to have those conversations with one another. And so, yes, it is, it is definitely embedded across, particularly in restorative practices and anti-bias training. And I also wanted to mention too, kind of back to Michelle, a big thing in restorative practices is we make sure that restorative practices is also equity-centered. So, so you are getting kind of the, the principles of DEI and what we believe in as a district when you go through restorative practices training here as well.
Thank you.
John, can I ask you real quick?
Sure.
Margaret, I heard a rumor that Dr. Jay Marx is retiring?
He is, yes, his last day is June 30th.
I don't know there any one, everyone knows Dr. Jay Marx, but he's been a good, good friend of this district for many years. And good luck to him and his endeavors going into the future.
Devastating for all of us.
Do you know by chance?
I tried to get the info from Jay, I tried to get it today, when I was on a call with Jay, I tried to get it.
You read my mind.
No, I cannot tell you that information. So I, I don't know where they're at in the process or anything, but I do know the position was posted and that they are at least in the process of hiring his replacement.
When you do hear, maybe you can just send us a quick, literally mail or something like that.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that, yep.
Because we've used him as, in the district many, many times.
Even though he hasn't been coming into the district, he is my number one mentor. And so it is definitely devastating. But that's true for all of us that have similar equity positions across the county. We're all a very tight-knit group and he, he is, has been our fearless leader and I draw a lot of inspiration from him and will continue to do so. So he is, it's a big loss for the county, for sure.
One last question from Paul.
Just following up to Michelle's questions on training, so, a couple of things. I know like four or five years ago, I don't know, maybe six years ago, there was diabetes training, you mentioned ADHD is probably, I mean, it's probably in one every three students. Are we, are we looking at different types of training for general ed teachers in addition to what you're doing for the special ed teachers to get them prepared? I'm sure, I'm sure a majority of our students across the districts, like you said, have ADHD. Some may not be diagnosed, some do, to get them to understand, you know, that. So what type of other training are we doing for general ed teachers to help them with students in the classroom?
Yeah, so that's one of, going to be one of the primary focuses of the instructional coaches going forward is doing a lot of professional development in those buildings. Doing in small groups, whether they're working with the kindergarten teachers or, you know, grade level or doing something building-wide, but kind of providing those resources and support so that it's kind of boots-on-the-ground. That way, what they're presenting, they can go and follow up with in the classroom in terms of some of the strategies and supports. So it will be presentations to everybody.
And then you asked about diabetes, so I'm also guessing other medical concerns. Deb Glazer, our school district nurse, has been doing those trainings with staff, with administrators, and will continue to do so.
As I was saying, I know years ago they had one, I don't know if it's been going on recently.
Yeah.
She's done, she's done training for diabetes, I think in every building.
Let me know if you'd like a list of just all the things she'll be doing training on. Includes how to use the EpiPen and different types. And there's a whole list of things just to make sure that everyone's up to speed because if there is a student in need, we need to make sure we're able to treat whatever that need is to the best of our ability at that time. And then also by having Deb, it's a consistent message in every building. She also is working on building relationships with everyone and everyone has her cell phone number, so they're also able to watch out. We're finding it's much better than trying to bring somebody in here and there and contract it out. And maybe one building gets one message, another building gets another message. Then when you have those follow-up questions, like, you know, if a student needs, if the medical need requires the use of a suppository and that type of training, right? I remember sitting through that years ago, then having several follow-up questions, but knowing to go to. And it also allows us to continue the training and meet the needs as the needs come up, instead of just trying to check a box every year at the beginning, saying, okay, we did all these things. And it's, oftentimes, you're, you're trying to manage the first week of school to remember everything and it's a lot to remember.
Yeah, Pat, I'll just jump in on that quickly. So Debbie and I work pretty closely. She supports a lot of the 504 plans, so as students are newly identified or as their annual plans come up, she's, she started a system where staff reach out to her. She comes in and provides the training, so everything's set before the student would come back. And also, we're also in the process of kind of streamlining all of the forms as it relates to all of our medical documentation. So all of that, hopefully by the end of the summer, will be up on the website. And all of that is coming through different, through the different foundations. But we're basically coming up with one singular process that everyone will follow instead of having separate forms district-wide.
What a concept.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, is there a report today?
Siva, Paul, Superintendent Watson and I met with 28 applicants over the weekend. One dipped into Monday, but we interviewed 28. We also reviewed 28 outstanding packages, including resumes and written letters of intent. We built upon last year's rubric a little bit. So now we have criteria that we looked for in the interview, in the letter of intent and in the resume, so to add consistency to, to ranking. And have done that. I thought it might be interesting to share briefly a couple of the responses. One of the interview questions that we asked them was, what are three changes you've seen in the district recently? A couple came from other districts, so they had to, you know, talk about changes from their district to ours. But, but what was really interesting to me and part of why I asked Margaret that question was one of the consistent things that they cited was the ability to be able to have conversations that a year or two ago would never have existed. And I thought they put that so beautifully. And, you know, for me, watching to see if what we put on paper, if our practice and our procedure kind of align with each other, it was so nice to hear that. And we have a long way to go, but at least we're having the conversations, according to them. Another thing I think Paul alluded to was that they overwhelmingly supported the Student Senate and the ability to be able to get feedback from students of different ages through an organized system like our Student Senate. So thankful to our current interns and advisory committee for taking the lead on that one. But yeah, the answers to the questions were really, I thought, really insightful. So I have about 25 pages of notes if anybody wants more, more detail into some of the insights they shared with us. We are getting ready to tabulate some of the, our scoring and will be able to notify students who, applicants very soon who will be coming back for, I think, back for second interviews or maybe we're able to. Well, we're deciding that right now. I know you, last year, you could do it based off numbers. And, and I think that's a discussion that we're going to be having tonight, so. The committee, not the whole board, don't panic. That's it, if I miss something, Siva, Paul, please fill in.
Howard, do we have anything to report?
So on the superintendent evaluation committee, we have a meeting scheduled about a month from now to discuss our second task that we have to work on, which is looking at our superintendent tool and kind of seeing what issues, if any, we have with that and what we want to do for 2023. So that's on June 20th.
Thank you, Howard. We'll move on to 9C. Do I have a motion?
I request to support, I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution of support of the fiscal year 2022-23 proposed budget for Oakland Schools.
Support of or disapprove?
Well, we are going to support, at least my recommendation is we support it.
I think we start with support. I mean, it's kind of worded that way, true, but we have to make a decision one way or the other. So by our vote, we will choose to support or not support. Sure.
Is there a second?
There is, Siva's second to.
So the, I attended a session at Oakland Schools about three or four weeks ago and Tina attended a similar session with all the financial directors of the districts in the state and in the county a few days before that. the state and in the county a few days before that. Just to refresh everyone's memory, one of the state laws is that all the districts in ISD need to vote on adopting the proposed general fund budget for each one of the ISDs in the state. It's, they, ISD has, IRISD has a number of different funds. They have a general fund. They have a special education fund. They have a CTE fund, and then some other miscellaneous ones. So, but the only thing that we're being asked to approve is the general fund. I did not bring my paperwork here. I left it at home, unfortunately. But they provided us a good three-quarters of an inch thick doc, level of documentation of their, their budgets and how they plan on spending their money. And I didn't see any issues in it, so I am recommending that we approve their budget as proposed. Tina, did you want to say anything from your side?
No, you summarize my log.
Paul?
No comment.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six-zero. Moving on to 9D.
I move the Board of Education, Bloomfield Hills Board of Education designate Howard Barron as its representative, and hopefully he'll agree, John Van Gamert as its alternative to serve on the 2022 electoral body responsible for electing the members of the Oakland Schools Intermediate District Boards of Education. I move that, I also move, I'm going to put this all in one motion if that's all right. I also move that the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education support, let's see, Steve Gottlieb and Connie Williams for the two positions on the Oakland Schools Intermediate School District Board of Education for a term of six years, ending June 30th, 2028. I also move that the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education directs its representative to vote for Steve Gottlieb and Connie Williams on the first ballot taken at the June 6th, 2022 election.
Second?
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. I was under the impression, Howard, from you, that we had to rank all of the candidates in case there was disparity among districts, and they had to go by numbers.
You are correct. So, that the, so what Rebecca put into the motion was the required document, the required motion that we have to do. What I would, we can either amend this motion, or we can just have some general discussion about three, four, and five, whatever you would want.
Well, I don't necessarily want to have discussion, but I'd like to just put on the record whatever your recommendations and John's are as our delegates.
Sure. So, let's see.
Howard, if I may speak up?
Sure.
I thought the last time we discussed this as the committee of the whole, that there were just a few...
Did you get up to the...
Sorry. I thought the last time we discussed at the committee of the whole, you had indicated that there were only a few candidates that you felt were, would earn your support. And there were two. And you weren't confident that you were going to vote for, you know, candidates three, four, five, six. It's still the case?
So, refreshing the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago on the process. So, this motion would send us, either myself or John, into the meeting to vote for the two candidates that we just, I just mentioned, Steve and Connie. If there is a tie vote, and only if there's a tie vote, then it goes to a runoff election. And that's where the other three come into play.
So, my question to you is, do we need candidates three, four, five, six, or do we need just candidate number three?
Well, if the two candidate, let's think through logistics. If the two candidates that we are putting forward don't get the, you know, are the last two, they will drop out. So, therefore, we would want some, myself or John, our representatives, we'd want some marching orders.
Well, so the tie would be between, either it could be one, two, and three.
Could be a three-way tie.
I mean, if it was a, what we're saying...
But there's 28 districts voting. So, if District 7, 8, 9, 10 choose number six as their number one, if we don't all rank them, then we aren't...
It could be, I mean, it could be a tie of 7, 7, 7, 7, or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, really, you'd have no idea who other districts might vote for.
Yeah. But what are the chances of that happening, right?
Pretty small. But...
Maybe we could entrust Howard to make that choice on the spot.
I, oh, does the voting happen on the spot?
Yeah, it happens right away.
It happens right then.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. I thought we had to submit something. Yes, I entrust Howard to do that. That's my...
Okay. And then we can literally go with the flow with that.
I thought that this was the voting right here.
Should I, should we re-watch the video now?
I watched enough of the videos.
No, we trust Howard. No, no more videos.
We can start. How long is it? One hour, 20 minutes?
It's one hour. One hour.
All right. So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And John, you're okay with being the alternate? If I break my leg or something?
Yeah, just go, please.
Thank, I will do that.
We'll somehow figure out that, we'll bank that Howard's going to make it there.
I'll drive you there.
But realize that this ISD board is the one who does the final approval on the ISD budget, the whole budget that we just discussed, the motion earlier.
We get it. Before we leave, just make sure that our next meeting has everything on it that we want. Next, we're just one meeting, right?
Yeah, it's a whole.
Our committee, the whole.
Is it June 9th?
Yeah, June 9th. That is correct.
What do we, there's something already on there, right?
Yeah. Let me go back to the draft agenda. Here we go right here.
It's just capital planning and panorama survey.
And then we have this before.
Right.
But you wanted, you wanted to add, what's the conversation to add, budget to every cow?
Right. Howard, was that your suggestion that we add budget, like a, I'm not sure exactly how to do it, where Tina doesn't have to work in advance, but to add some sort of budget discussion to every cow?
I would defer to our superintendent.
Yeah, just as a standing item. So, if there's an update or things we want to share, we can share it. Or if there are questions, it's already a pre-scheduled opportunity to ask additional questions at that time. Obviously, we'd like to know in advance if there are going to be questions, but just opportunity to provide updates on the budget.
But, and it also can tie in, and, you know, I've had the conversation with some of you, possibly making some minor modifications to our fund balance policy related to this. Some of the discussions that we were just having over the last few hours and will have over the next few weeks, I think this is going to go on for, you know, a good number of months until we can sort of get to a happy place for all of us.
Okay.
Do you, do you need an update, Lisa, at the cow? Just want to make sure. No?
Do I need an update?
Do you need to be added to the cow on the June 9th for your committee? No or yes?
Will we have a decision? Will we have a recommendation to go, to be voted on?
Oh.
I think that's what Michelle's asking.
Thank you.
Student intern.
Not you personally.
For June 9th?
June 9th.
But...
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and say yes on that because, yes.
What is, did you read, what is on the agenda for the night? I didn't look at the agenda.
Capital planning, Part 2, and panorama survey data.
Okay, got it. The capital plan, I think, is going to take a period of time.
All right. So, we only, we're only adding the two additional. You're good?
The bu, well, yes. So, the budget, and then what was the other?
Student intern.
Okay.
Do you, we don't need an update because we don't have a meeting.
Are we, so, we're going to enter the 23rd meeting as well?
Yeah. I think we're going to vote in an open, you know, in a televised meeting, in a regular meeting, I should say. But in terms of going over processes and questions and everything, so we're prepared, definitely. I would like to see that on the agenda. We'll be ready by then.
Can I just, so, going back to last year, John, Michelle, and myself, we did this in two steps at the board table. We, remember we did it with, with numbers, anonymous, you know, it was number, candidate number seven and candidate number 15.
Yeah. They're not going to use the numbers.
And then, and then we, so we did that at one meeting and voted on it. So, it was anonymous. And then the next meeting, we actually introduced, had the interns here face-to-face. Are we planning on doing that again this year?
What we can do is, because of FERPA, we will circulate all of the names attached to a number. Then on the 9th, we'll make, we'll discuss what our recommendations are, take questions if anyone has them, how we got to the decision, the process we used, et cetera, so that by the 23rd, we'll be ready to approve.
So, so when we approve it on the 23rd, are we going to be using names or numbers?
I believe that we will be using numbers because I think out of fairness to students, those who, both who are selected and those who are not, we're going to make personal contact with them first before we broadcast it.
So, what I'm, what we did last year is the same process, but we had it a little earlier, such that before the students went away for summer break, we actually could have the actual students here. So, is it possible for us during the study session, or the committee of the whole, to actually, for this exception, actually do that vote then in, with numbers? And that way, at the 23rd, we actually have the candidates here face-to-face, and we congratulate them.
Well, the 23rd, they, they're done with the school year on the 16th. So, you know, many of them will be leaving for camp or whatever they're doing for the summer.
But at least we can have some of them.
We'll, we'll discuss it. We'll discuss.
Yeah. I mean, the only exception to the rule is we would actually be doing a vote then. I mean, we could even have a special meeting if necessary.
Well, we put it on the agenda for next time, so we'll talk about it then. It'll be fine. All right. Call for adjournment.
Yeah.
Thank you.